Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay, can we find out who's here tonight?
Catherine Stransky. Are you here?
No, I'm not here. Obviously not. Yes, I am here.
Federal.
Here.
But Mr. Orinstein.
I am here as well. Okay, Public Communications Council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Well, it's going to be the honor system, I guess. Yes, that little thingy. When the red light flashes, snap back because the floor opens. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. Item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the opposeded agenda. Public criticism of the city council commission, boards and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. So, the first order of business under Public Matters is a presentation of the proclamation recognizing National Day of Service and Remembrance and commemorating Patriot Day, September 11th, 2015. And I would like to, I want to read the proclamation and I want to present it to Roger Hamm, who is the commander of the local American Legion. I was thinking VFW.
I approve both.
Okay, so there are two different things.
Yes, there are.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Willets City Council recognizing the National Day of Service and Remembrance and commemorating Patriot Day, the day to remember, September 11th, 2001. Whereas, the terrorist attacks sustained by the United States on September 11th, 2001 will live forever in the memory of all Americans. And whereas, the tragic loss of 3,016 lives on that day in New York City, at the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania must never be forgotten. And whereas, many emergency service workers sacrificed their lives in a courageous effort to save the men, women, and children who were innocent victims of this act of terrorism. And whereas, nations around the world must work together to address global terrorism so that all citizens of the world may live free of fear. And whereas, any appropriate way to commemorate those who lost their lives in the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001 is through the annual celebration of their living, including promoting global peace and goodwill, demonstrating resolve to eradicate terrorism, advancing responsible citizenship, encouraging patriotism and love of country, and honoring the courage of the human spirit. Now therefore, I, Ron Orinstein, Vice Mayor of the City of Willets, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2015 as Patriot Day, and issue this proclamation to memorialize those men, women, and children who lost their lives in the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001. Further, I encourage all the citizens of Willets to remember and honor those whose lives were taken without cause on that tragic day, as well as the families and loved ones who suffered the devastation of those losses. In witness thereof, in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Willets to be affixed on this ninth day of September, 2015. That's nice. Who wrote that? Seriously, you don't know? I like it. Commander?
I would say that on, you know, behalf of the citizens of this community. Believe me, they will hear me from here. But certainly thank you, I certainly thank the council for remembering 9/11, just like December 7th, 1941. We will not forget the state either, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And looking forward to seeing everyone at the Patriot's Day Ceremony if you're available on Friday at 12:15.
At the high school?
Yes. Information is in the newspaper, you should probably see it a couple. Thank you, glad you could get it in there.
I just wanted, I just wanted to add two things. One, I've been to the ceremony that they had at the high school, and I think last year was the first year that the, there were students there that weren't alive, you know, when this, when this happened, which is...
Weren't born yet.
Yeah, it's a sobering experience, and I think it's really important to pass down our memories to those kids who maybe don't have it seared in their brain quite like we do. And I had to go to Eureka today before this meeting, and on my way back down, I stopped at the Humboldt Bay Wildlife Refuge, just to like stretch my legs, and there was a plaque there, and they actually, the director of the wildlife refuge was on Flight 93, so they had, they had a plaque for him, and named it after, you know, which I thought, you don't realize that there's local impact, you know, that it's very close by, right up the road, so I'll look forward to seeing you on Friday.
And we do not learn from history, we will surely repeat ourselves.
You're here.
Okay. Oh, oh, 9C1, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to make a slight change in the agenda. We're going to move item 9C1 into, and we're going to cover it right now because I understand there are people here who want to talk about it. So, I guess Adrian, you want to lead this off?
Sure, it's John Sherman's item, but this is discussion on possible action regarding a request that we've received for the removal of a lien placed at, on 251 Laurel Street here in Willets. The current property owner is present tonight and has made this request to the city. This lien was placed on the property after some ongoing but unsuccessful efforts to bring the previous property owner into code compliance, and then the property went into foreclosure. The current property owner has done the cleanup of the property, and I understand it is either in escrow or there's a potential buyer, but the amount of the lien is making it difficult to complete this transaction. So first, I'd like to have John come up and give details and answer any questions you have about this.
Thank you, John Sherman, City of Willets. This property, the previous owner of this property loaded the entire lot with junk, with old vehicles, with at one point, two live pigs in a pig pen, and he basically didn't want to respond to us. And what this lien represents is a combination of code enforcement costs, some legal costs, and administrative fines, and that the previous owner really just refused to deal with us. We had him in several hearings, he became belligerent, walked out of the meetings, that kind of thing. What I'd like to say here is that this is a large amount, and I'm not at all opposed to forgiving part of this, but please keep in mind that part of this are actual costs to the city. At the very least, we should be recovering those costs.
Do you have a number of what those, those costs are, an amount?
Not, not a number specifically, but I would say that those costs are probably thirty, forty percent of that figure.
At one point, I did, I did ask John for an itemization of the cost, and you did provide me with some of that. It was actual contact letters and hearings, and basically your time in it, but it didn't reflect any other time, whether it be the city attorney or my time in administrative hearings and dealing with this matter. So, I think that probably thirty percent is, is close to what the cost recovery aspect of this would be.
Okay, so let, I don't want to, I'm trying to figure out the best way to deal with this. I have some questions, of course, and I'm wondering if maybe we should hear from the property owners first and get the whole picture and then dig down. Does anybody up here have any questions in the meantime?
Wait until Rich asks.
And attached to your agenda summary is the letter from the county whip.
Thanks for allowing me to come to speak tonight. I don't wholly own this piece of property, I'm a half-investor on the property, so...
Did you want to introduce yourself for the clerk?
Richard Russell, I'm a property owner. I went to high school with the clerk.
Just for the record.
Anyway, without a physical breakdown of the cost, I don't know how I can even proceed with, with what we think should be paid or should not be paid. In my, in my opinion, I came to the city when I first found out about this lien, I found out from the chief. We were already in the foreclosure process. This is the second time we've had it foreclosed on this property. So, we're down thousands of dollars just taking it back. I really don't want to do that again. The person we're trying to sell it to now says they want to build there. You know, obviously I won't have any control once we sell the property to that person what they do, but they've already contacted the city on, on sidewalks and curb and gutter and what they need to do and permits, et cetera, so I think they have a strong intent of building there. I own two other properties on the street, so I have a strong interest in seeing it kept up as well and built on and enhancing the city and the neighborhood and the property values, et cetera. So, when I came to John, when I found out about the lien, I was trying to get it to stop before it went through because we were in the foreclosure process. He told me that wasn't possible at the time, but to come back, which I did, and I said it's foreclosed on, can we get the lien removed? He said you need to clean it up first, so I cleaned it up. Took a couple of weekends and a lot of truckloads and dealing with the previous owner who lived right behind it. He and I also had words, and he also left those conversations unhappy. But anyway, I moved some of the stuff back to his house, which he said he wanted. I took a lot to the dump. I cut down the grass, been trying to keep it up, but finding somebody that wants to do yard work when you don't live in the town has, has been hard. I don't even know who weed-eated it this time. I ran over there with my weed eater around 4th of July and somebody just done it, so I don't know who did that. Thank you. If anybody knows who did it. So, we would like just the entire lien removed so we could sell the property. We're basically only selling it for what we have into it. Actually, if I were to crunch the numbers, I'm probably going to lose money, but the original amount we loaned on the property to the contractor is what we're selling it for right now. This was seven, eight years ago. So, we're not looking to make a huge profit, we're just trying to recover our money. We've had to pay back taxes with both of the people we foreclosed on, and then the foreclosure fees, and, and it's just, it's, it's, really, we're, we're here to invest. I didn't want to own the lot, I just wanted to invest in something for retirement income. So, it would be my hope that we could just forgive the lien in its entirety. If not, I would have to consider holding on to the property until I could get out of the property with my cost or my investment is, plus the lien amount, so it may end up sitting there longer, I don't know. Somebody, this gentleman interested may want to pay it, but he may not.
Okay, so just, just to kind of put a, you know, circle around it to define what we're talking about here. You owned the property previously.
Yes.
You sold it to whoever, and this, the, the person who bought it from you, he bought it out, right? You didn't, it wasn't a lease purchase or anything like that, he bought it from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then during that period, this person used it as a dump?
Yes, basically.
And you were, you're out of the picture at this point?
I was out of the picture, but I was in contact with him because I go up and down that street.
Right, right.
Was not in agreement, but there was nothing legally, I didn't have a leg to stand on.
Exactly. Okay, so then, you, you bought the property back from this, this person. The lien was put on at what point, John?
March of 2014.
And, and, oh, it's right there. March of 2014, and, and did you own it at that time, or was it the other owner?
It was in foreclosure. The other owner owned it at the time, but we were foreclosing at that point.
So, the lien was placed during the foreclosure, but at that point, the other party was still, still owned the property?
Legally in control of the property, yes.
Okay. And then you took it, you foreclosed, you took over the property. At that point, the lien could not be applied during a foreclosure, could it? Could it?
I don't understand. When you previously owned the property and you sold it, you, you were a secured lienholder against the property, you had a first deed of trust on the property?
First deed of trust, yes.
So, the buyer bought the property as subject to a first deed of trust to pay a promissory note to you, and he defaulted on that, and you foreclosed on that deed of trust. And that's how you acquired the property?
Oh, okay, okay. So, you were still holding the paper then?
Yes.
Okay. I guess technically, he still owned the property, I guess, right?
Well, he, he's a creditor to the property. He's a, he holds a, a note, he hold a deed of trust securing a note on the property. So, he, he foreclosed on that when he wasn't getting paid, and when the property was being used as a junkyard by the new owner, and then he ultimately foreclosed on his deed of trust.
Now, it, it may not be pertinent, but, and, and you're not required to answer, of course, if it has nothing to do with anything, but why did you foreclose?
He quit making the payments.
Oh, okay, that's a good reason. Okay, Larry, do you have?
Did anybody from the city send a certified letter to anybody that was involved in this, to Rich or the person that owned the property or was buying the property?
Yes, several.
Okay, I didn't see anything in this about, about that. In, in my agenda.
He has a previous owner under code enforcement action almost continuously.
Okay, what about Rich?
Rich wasn't in the picture as far as I had, I mean, he held a mortgage on the property, but he wasn't really a homeowner.
Okay, but if, if Rich's, wasn't in the picture, then why are we leaning it against Rich?
We didn't. We leaned the property, and when we leaned the property, the previous owner was still in the law.
And so it stays with the property?
Okay, so, so does the other person still own property in the City of Willets?
Not that I know of.
And, so the other owner got definitely letters from the city saying that it's, that you're in, not in compliance, and Rich did not get any?
That's correct.
As a lienholder?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, I'm pretty much seeing this as a, you know, as a bad debt. They're not going to, the rightful person who should be paying this amount is the previous owner who is not going to pay this amount. So, it's tricky because obviously we want to have at least cost recovery. Thirty percent of that amount is eighteen-five, about.
No, eight.
Sorry.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, seven thousand, but I was thinking, oh, I was thinking reducing the amount.
Well, thirty percent is a little over eight thousand dollars, and that represents the costs, I believe, that, that...
Please understand there was no intent to affect Mr. Russell one way or another. This code enforcement action was ongoing action. I'm not sure I remember correctly, but I believe we had, had at least two and I think three administrative hearings. He knew, definitely knew that he was accruing these fines. He definitely knew that he was accruing these code enforcement costs.
Yeah.
We did not place the lien on the property to punish Mr. Russell at all. Like I said, at the point where I filed the lien, the property was still legally owned by the previous owner.
Do you think, Mr. Russell, do you think if the amount was lower to eight thousand dollars, that that might be something that would be more attainable, or would that still impede your ability to improve the property?
If I had to pay more than the filing fee, more than a token fee, I'll just hold on to the property. I have no reason to sell it. I mean, I can hold on to it for ten more years, or forever. How long, based on whatever you decide to leave on the property, that lien, and I can hold on to it for that amount of time until the property values go up, plus, plus the taxes I'll have to pay between now and then. So, and without a, well, I mean, we're just guessing here.
Yeah.
And I don't see how...
Well, I could, I could actually sit down and extend, extend all this out, and I have in the past, but I, I...
Right, so I believe...
I've never, I've never received anything in writing.
Yes.
I asked Mr. Sherman, he told me get ahold of the county clerk to see what the dollar amount was.
Well, before, before we nail down the, the dollar amount, I mean, for, for purposes of talking, we're talking in the area of eight thousand dollars, I'm thinking. So, you are foreclosing, or you have foreclosed?
We have foreclosed. We've owned it for about a year now.
Okay, so you don't have any hooks into this guy anymore?
Oh, I, no, not.
Yeah, I mean, unless you take him to court or something, which is probably going to do you a lot of good, apparently.
And I could be wrong about this, but seems to me that back in the eighties, when we went with mandatory trash, that there was a provision in the mandatory trash that we as a city could pick up the trash or whatever on the property if it was, and I don't know how to describe it, if it was a menace.
Yeah, it declared a nuisance, I think.
Okay. So, obviously, the, the debris that was on the lot was a menace, and my question is, why didn't we as a city invoke that right and start picking it up?
We felt like we could negotiate with the previous owner. I hope I'm correctly not using his name, but we, we thought we could negotiate with him, and several times he came to us and led us to believe we could negotiate with him. The, the process you're talking about involves going and getting a warrant, so, from the superior court, so that we can go on the property with a contractor and remove the nuisance.
So, we didn't start that procedure at all?
But we did start the finding, you know, we, we have records of instituting the fines and repeated conversations.
I understand it. I'm just saying that you can introduce the fines, but the person that's there to pick up the fines is not here, and there's no way that we can get our, our hooks into him. And Mr. Russell, which owns the property, is coming in later on in this, and he is, and he was never notified.
Well, he's being penalized for the actions of the prior owner.
Right. I, I want to say one other thing. I am here because my family is in this problem, and I should have stated this first, but I am not getting any financial gain for this, so consequently, I feel that I can vote on this one way or the other, and I just want to make that plain to the audience. Thank you. I should have stated that earlier, I'm sorry, John.
And I understand that you did raise that question with legal counsel.
Yes.
And he ruled that you have no conflict of interest.
So, I just want to clarify, and for Mr. Russell, it's true, we didn't get the itemized summary in our agenda packets, but the city manager does have an itemized summary of John's time, but it doesn't account for the city manager's time and legal counsel's time. So, how, how much is the total for John's itemize?
Let's see, this is basically an itemization of written efforts, and it is $2,776. And that's inclusive of contact letters, site inspections, notice of nuisances, orders to show cause, notices, three administrative hearings, two notice of intention to file special assessment lien, three administrative orders, two administrative fine notices, and one special assessment lien.
And that's included in the $2,700?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I, I see this as one of those, kind of a catch-22 situation. You know, obviously, this man is not the guilty party.
Right.
And, and he did whatever he could do under the circumstances, and the circumstances were limited. You didn't own the property. The city, you know, we could do that hindsight thing and say we should have, could have, would have, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know that we didn't do what was called for. I, I, you know, I, I don't think that would be an accurate statement either. You did what you had to do, what you're legally able to do, and sometimes, stuff just doesn't work out. You know, you go after a deadbeat and you don't get what you want. My personal preference is not to penalize Mr. Russell. I don't know you, but you look like a nice guy, and I have no interest in penalizing you, especially since you, I think it's pretty clear, you, you carry no, no responsibility for anything that's going on. On the other hand, we are a public entity, and we are the guardian of the public trust and the public money, and we have to be very careful about how we spend the public money. But on the other hand, you know, the eight thousand dollars and the $2,700, I mean, the city would have spent that money anyway. I mean, you, you get a weekly paycheck, I understand, or a monthly paycheck, or whatever. Whatever you do, if you take a nap in your office, you're still getting paid. You don't take a nap in your office, but you know, the point is, whatever you do, for accounting purposes, we like to, you know, charge all of your, and, and all of city staff, charge it all to something so we can know with certainty what, how much money is being spent for every activity. But the bottom line is that whether or not you, you did this, you would be doing something else with your time. We would still be spending the money. And I know it's kind of convoluted, maybe, but I mean, that's, that's the only way I can see it. You know, you're still going to spend the money whether you dealt with this or not, unless you have something to contradict that with.
Not contradict it, but to keep in mind that my job as the code enforcement officer is described in chapter 1.12 of Willet's Municipal Code, and essentially, the actions I take are dictated in that ordinance. Essentially, it gives me the authority to make some judgment calls, and in this case, I did make some judgment calls. And I want to make a point of it, too. Mr. Russell says he drives up and down that street all the time. I didn't hear from him until our deal with the previous owner had blown up and was handed around.
Is that when you found out about this whole issue?
What, what do you mean by this whole issue?
I believe there was neighborhood complaints.
When he called, or, or how did you find out about the, well, obviously, you knew ahead of time because you put a lien on the property.
I, I believe I had six written complaints on this.
Okay, and that spurred action on your part?
Virtually everybody on the street wrote me letters.
Okay, and, and then you took action based on that?
Yes.
Okay, so, you're blameless. You know, we're not, we're not looking to, you know, nobody's getting blamed here except one person who's not in the room. Everybody did what they were supposed to do, and what we're, what we're stuck with, I believe, is this either eight thousand or $2,700 of money that it would be nice for the city to recover. I mean, does that kind of simplify where we're at?
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So, I, and I'm making this motion because I do think we have a responsibility to follow staff's recommendation to at least cover our costs. However, we don't have a city manager and the city attorney's costs outlined, so I understand, so that's why I'm not including that. So, I would like to move that we reduce the fee to the amount that is itemized, the $2,000...
$776.
$776.
And how much is that?
That's just...
In how much?
$2,776.
Okay.
And that's just what we have an itemized list of John's time for.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Well, let, let, we have a motion.
But we won't vote yet.
And do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now, we'll have some comments, but if you'd like to step up and, and please introduce yourself first.
I'm Eddie Stransky, and I own Redwood Mortgage here in town, and I worked with Rich for many years and been investing, so we could just go through my office. And I am also on the other end where I represent the buyer for this lot, and the buyer for this lot has offered us X amount of dollars, which is already, we are losing, Mr. Russell and Mrs. Garzini is losing money on this deal. If they go ahead and accept this, losing another $2,800 or whatever, it may just... it may just kill the deal. If that happens, then we won't have the permit fees, we won't have the sidewalks done, we won't have the neighbors happy that this transaction is going forward. So, um, my, my feeling is, I understand Mr. Sherman did his job, however, he does get a salary. It is part of the job to write letters and do that transaction regardless if it was this property or any other properties, that is the job. So, I feel it should be released in full. I know it's happened before on other properties here in town, and I just think it's the only way that this buyer is going to go ahead and go forward on the price that we have offered on the table.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the public while we're open to the public? So, so clarify something for me. Right now, do I understand that the property is clean?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Oh. Please join us.
I just wanted to remind council that these are general fund revenues that we're talking about. I just wanna remind you of that.
Well, okay, so what does that mean?
It's general, it's general fund revenue, so whatever decision you make here today is gonna affect the budget in that same amount.
Well, how does it do that?
Because that was budgeted as revenue for
As rev, you, you had budgeted, you have a budget, you have a budget item that included the, the lien as revenue?
Yes.
How does that work? Is that posted when the lien is placed?
Yeah.
As future income? Um, what, what about the, the cost? The cost is, is, is in the departmental budget, I guess, right, so that's not an extraordinary amount, right?
Right, well, the cost is offset by
The revenue.
The revenue, typically.
Huh.
Just, I just wanted to
So, we're looking at, you have a revenue figure in the budget of $26,518.
I don't have the budget in front of me, but we have
Well, I mean, that's the number that I see here, that's the amount of the lien.
Okay, I, I'm just saying that whatever that amount is, we would've been including that as revenue. I don't know if it was that exact dollar amount.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm taking this, uh, $26,518, so I assume that's the amount of the lien, I assume that's the amount that you put into the budget.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
What I was hoping to accomplish with my motion is to reduce it to an amount, one, that we can back up with our numbers, and two, 'cause, I mean, it's drastically less than $26,000.
It is.
But also, you know, we don't wanna penalize the property owners, especially ones who are trying to, to fix up the neighborhood, and that lot has been a real problem in that, in that neighborhood, and so you know, I, I am hoping that that $2,000 will, you know, $2,700 won't squash the sale, I mean, that would, that would really be unfortunate, but my hope is that that is within the, within the ballpark of what would be a reasonable compromise. And I under, I understand the idea of getting rid of it altogether, I mean, it's
All right, so even if we, even if we go for this $2,700 amount, we're still gonna take a hit of a little less than $24,000 in the budget.
But also, if the sale doesn't happen, you wouldn't get those permit fees and those other, those other things coming in, which are a positive to the budget, and it could improve the neighborhood.
Well, there is that, I mean
Which would improve the values of surrounding properties.
That's, that's the problem, it's not all dollars and cents, I mean, you know, we, we, we very often I, I'm choosing my words carefully, we very often pass on, let's say, opportunities, you know, and, and eat it, eat the money for a bigger purpose.
I feel like I should put this in perspective by just reminding you that every time I write a citation, every time I find someone for code violation, that is revenue to my department.
Right.
Like you say, you're, you're gonna pay me anyways, but you don't just drive around town.
No, I, I understand that, I mean, we're not gonna have you parking by intersections and writing tickets or anything like that, but I, I, I get your point, yeah, thank you. Oh, man.
It's up to you to go with questions.
All right, um.
Do you want me to comment further?
Pardon?
Do you want me to comment further?
Yeah, please, if, I need all the help I can get here.
Um, well, I've spoken with Mr. Russell about this matter, and, um, I personally, I would like to be as supportive as possible to the sale of this property, because I think the bigger picture is that we have the potential improvement on that property into the neighborhood, and this has been a long, longstanding issue for the city. You know, we always have to be concerned with cost recovery, and, um, I didn't realize that we have that built in as revenue, it makes sense, of course. So, that's, that's of concern, but at the same time, I think the bigger picture is that we stand much more to gain in the long run. I do think that the $2,775 is more than reasonable, considering what the lien currently sits at, but if it was the council's interest to remove it entirely, in, in light of the long-term potential, I think the staff can look at that.
So, so you, you said that, is, is it possible that this deal will die if the $2,700 is tacked on to the price?
It is possible. I have no such interest in losing that $2,700.
Okay, so there's two ways of dealing with this, either raise the price by the $2,700, or you eat it.
Right.
And you said that you're really not interested in doing that because you're just about
It's a, it's a, the property is an investment for me, and I invested in it to make money, not lose money. So, if I have to hold on to it longer, and I think I could get that money, I could recover that $3,003,500, I'd get calls on that lot. But, very few have called back, and even fewer, uh, contract and go into escrow, and even fewer get ahold of the city to see what the permit fees and, and, uh, circumstances will be with building something on that lot. There's only one person who's ever done that, and that's the person who's in escrow right now. So, if I were a gambling man, I'd say he's the one I'd wanna sell it to. But I'm not a real good gambling man, so if I incur another cost, I'm just gonna hold on to it.
And you might wake up better in five years anyway, but you never know.
Ron, did you have them come up to the, so that the people in the audience can hear what we're saying?
Yeah, okay, um. Mike, did you pick up any of those comments?
Jeff.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
It was coming through a week, but I think it was auto.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna ask that, you know, from now on, anybody makes comments, come up. That's what that microphone is for. All right, um, anybody else have any more to say?
If this motion fails, we'll make another motion.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second to reduce the, um, the lien to, can we use this number, $2,776? Is that a legitimate number to use?
Yes.
Which would be the cost of, um, John Sherman's time. Okay, okay. Do it.
Councilor Stransky?
No.
Matherall?
Yes.
Ms. Mattelstein?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the lien amount.
Okay, the, make it a zero, just let it
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? Okay.
Councilor Stransky?
Yes.
Matherall?
Yes.
Yes.
These are the three of us. Good luck, hopefully we'll see some improvements over there.
Thank you. Okay, I'll sleep over, please, I'm not even
Aren't you gonna stay for the rest of the meeting?
We'll watch it on TV.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we go back to the consent calendar, and
I'll mostly approve the consent calendar with, one of the minutes isn't here, right?
Yeah, August 26 is pulled, I believe.
Okay, I'll move the consent calendar except for August 26.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor of the consent calendar without the August 26 minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Do we have the informational reports, anybody have anything they wanna talk about on that? I noticed that the water usage, we're using more water, and we're getting more money, so I guess we're still okay, but we'll find out later. Okay, right to appeal, persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to a review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted Section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days to time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, we will now adjourn, not recess, wait, we're gonna adjourn.
Yes, adjourning?
We're gonna adjourn as a city council and reconvene as the city of Willis' successor agency. And sitting as the successor agency, you notice how we're different looking? Discussion the possible action of resolution to approve a recognized obligation payment schedule, 2015-16B for the period from January 2016 through June 2016, and I guess that is, um, Ms. Holmes is gonna carry us through that.
Good evening. Okay, tonight, we're asking you to approve the ROPS for the 1516B. What this ROPS 1516B is, is the truing up of what was actually spent for the period of January 2015 to June 2015, as well as what we expect that our expenses will be next January through June.
All right, say, say that part again, for you, to cover the cost from January to June of this year?
2015, right? So, we trued that up.
Right, and coming forward to
And then we, what we expect to January through June 2016 will be.
You know, I've seen these things every six months.
Yep.
And, and I'm actually on the committee, and I'm looking at it, and I'm not sure I understand some of the numbers that I'm looking at.
Okay, let's go over them. So, do you wanna start with H2, the one that says report of cash balances? Is that the
Okay, that's the long, okay. Okay, so you have the, this is the actual money that we have left in, in the, in the fund?
Mm-hmm, right, the $425,000 number is actually being held by, um, one of our tax bonds at US Bank. The 141,287 was amount from a prior ROPS that needed, that we, um, overestimated our expenses. So, we, that was being held in our cash. The rents and interests are what we've had so far, plus interest from our LEAF account.
And these are the expenditures?
These are revenues.
Revenues, okay.
So far, we're all, I mean, it's all cash. It's, it's not even really either, but the, the interest is considered a revenue. And then, in, um, column H, it's just kinda bringing it all over, the, um, 141 plus the 3,000, the total non-admin and admin cash beginning balance was 145. The, um, our PTTF amount, the revenue and income, this is what we expect to be coming from the county controller.
All right, and which one is this?
H2.
Page two.
No, H2, H, like, course, the bar column.
Oh, I see, there's letters up on top, okay. 236, 839, we expect this?
And our PTTF is the, um
So, this is the money that we're getting normally from the, the property tax that recharges this
The county controller, right?
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yep. The expenses, the income and revenue expenses actually tie out to one of the other reports. And then, it, it shows what we have, is what we think we should have. The $38,000 and the $38,000, those two tie out showing that.
Okay, so this would be the ending estimated available cash, so you're saying that we would be making a payment in this next six-month period of this 425,278?
The 425,278 is retention, it's gonna stay
That's what we keep, okay.
That's what we're gonna keep for our last bond payment.
So, so what payments will we be making?
The payments that we will be making are on page three, page four, page, the next page, flip it over.
The, the next page.
So, column B shows the different project names.
Right.
Right, and then, um, column I shows the total amount that either we know we owe, or we think we will pay
So, that would be this 8
Before 2024, November 2024.
This is the 8.4 million?
Yes, so we know we have 3.7 million in bonds. We estimate that our administrative costs are gonna be 900,000. We estimate that our tax bond trustee fees are gonna be 20,250, and the debt service should be the same as the top, because we only have that one.
So, all this adds up
Yes.
To the 8.4 million?
Mm-hmm, and I also think it's worth mentioning that, um, item number nine says loan from L&amp;M Income Fund, which is low and moderate housing. We will have made our last payment before January 2016, so that one will be done.
Okay, so remind me again, the administrative costs, you're showing we will have spent, or we will, we will have spent, or we did spend, actually, because this is period January 1 through June, oh, I'm sorry, this next year. We will spend, in the first half of next year, $900,000 for administrative costs?
No, we're saying we will spend $50,000, but through September of 2024, we will spend $900,000.
Okay, this, I'm, through, through when?
September of 2024, that's when our last
That's the, okay, okay. And, and we're permitted 250,000 a year, I believe? Something like that?
Um, I think you can ask for up to 250,000 in administrative fees, but we never have
We never have, right, right.
We don't have that much expense.
Okay.
We typically run around, um, 40,000.
Yeah, I think in the beginning, we were going up to about 100, 140, something like that.
60, we've been bringing it down.
Yeah.
Um, we still have $10,000 cushion in there, which we know we just won't we, we're pretty sure we're not gonna spend that money, and then the next time when we ask for it, they'll reduce it.
You think we could spend an extra $26,000? Never mind, forget I said that.
Are you okay to have a motion?
Uh, yes, is, is there any more information that anybody needs?
Larry, did you have a? I thought you I'll move we adopt the reservation approving the ROPS for 2015-16B.
We have a second?
I second that.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Okay, if we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Stransky?
Yes.
Matherall?
Yes.
Ms. Mattelstein?
Yes.
As soon as he's got a handle on all this.
And, and I assume that we're going to be having a meeting of the Oversight Committee soon?
It will most likely be next week.
Did, have you, have we posted that already?
No, not yet.
You're going to let me know? Thank you. Or did you just let me know? Okay. Thank you, Suze. Okay, um, City Manager reports.
Well, last Thursday, we had a little bit of an outage of internet service and cell service beyond, beyond the city. But I, I wanted to mention this, it was, you know, obviously something that wasn't anticipated. It caused quite a headache for a lot of different areas. Most notably, our 911 system went down throughout the county. And I just wanted to recognize the Willis PD Sergeant Mark McNally in particular, Little Lake Fire Department. I think those were the two primary, you know, our two primary local responders that went out to the schools, to the hospital, to the nursing homes, and, and did an in-person contact with everyone to make sure they had the business line numbers. They, we called in our extra, off-duty police officers to add extra patrol in the streets. Little Lake Fire also have brought in personnel to cover the station for 24 hours. And, you know, one of the things that we found is we didn't even have contact with County OES. Normally, when there is a county-wide incident, the county takes the lead role in dealing with that, and the other jurisdictions fall into place. But we didn't have our normal means of communication. So we just got together locally with the school district and the hospital folks and the fire departments and figured out our own response plan, and everybody did a really terrific job. Something that we have learned from and have begun a discussion about what we need to do in the future with this type of situation.
I just wanted to add a thank the paper for the kudos to staff. That was, that was very nice, and I was really impressed with how we handled everything in-house. I did talk to Mike McGuire about it. He was tweeting about it, which of course, no one could get, but their office was the only one in the offices of the Assembly members. His aide was the only one who had connectivity.
Oh, man.
So, so she, so they were doing a lot of triaging on their end. Very glad that it happened on a warm, sunny September day with, when we weren't in a crisis situation or a storm situation. I would also hope that we could partner, I'm sure the Sheriff's Office is going to be doing an extensive, you know, postmortem of the event. So I'd be really interested to hear what they find.
Actually, I received a survey today from County OES about the incident, which I presume they sent out to obviously everyone. One of the things that would be very beneficial to us is to have a volunteer program in our police department. It's something that was in the works a couple of years back, and it ended up having to be put on the back burner for a couple of reasons. Primarily, we didn't have enough personnel, sworn personnel, to provide a key component of the training. And, you know, we're basically in that situation again. I mean, we were able to call a couple of people in, but if we had had a volunteer force of, you know, half a dozen people, that could have been very instrumental to us in making those contacts that our officers or the fire department ended up making. So it's something that the chief and I and one of the sergeants and Mr. Moorhead have been discussing again over the last few months, and this was just really a perfect example of the need for that. So, stay tuned, I'm going to be bringing this back to you in the near future.
Okay, good.
So in addition to that, let's see, John's Place, I had previously reported would be on tonight's agenda as an appeal. It is not. The reason it is not is we found that we, in our own municipal code, decisions of the planning commission, because it's the city council that sits as a planning commission, those decisions are deemed final and non-appellable. And so unfortunately, we found that out after we had published a notice, but we, you know, in time to not hold the hearing tonight. We've discussed this with the applicant, and they are going to be submitting a new application because they had made a number of changes in their application to be responsive to the concerns that were raised at the, at the hearing that did occur. So our, our part-time planner determined that the changes were significant enough to constitute a new application, so that will be coming back before the city council sitting this planning commission in October. We expect that to be on October 7th, because it has to be noticed again.
That's interesting.
Yep. It's, you know, if we had had, and this isn't intended to be a shameless plug, but if we had had a full-time planner on staff, you know, Alan would have known this right out, right out of the gate, but we, we didn't have that, and so...
So the planning commission decisions are final?
Because of the fact that the city council sits as a planning commission. If we had had...
If you had a separate one, they could appeal.
That's correct.
And that's one of the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That came out of our MSR.
Yeah, they should have a separate body sitting as a planning commission. Just, probably just for this purpose.
It's probably not a bad idea, except try to find...
And that's been the challenge, trying to find, find people that are willing to serve on that body. Next, you, I distributed tonight citation that we received from the Water Board, and that was because, I'm going to have Rod come up to give you some detail about that, but we exceeded our limits, and even if you go slightly over, over is over, and so we do have to do a public notice to our water customers. That will be going out until, in tomorrow's mail. It was actually intended to go out with the water bills, and it got overlooked with, you know, between scheduling challenges. So it will be going out tomorrow, and, let's see, what else? I'll get to the other upcoming events under good and welfare. I think I want to have Rod give some information about the citation.
Okay, this is similar, or this is the same violation, I believe, from a couple of years ago, from 2013. Specifically states that it's not an imminent threat to human health, you have to read the language in there. But it is, it is an issue primarily associated with the severe drought conditions we're faced with, and the fact that we haven't flushed our, our distribution system for three years now. I believe it was the, I believe spring of 2012 was the last time we flushed, so I could be wrong, but...
I thought we started to flush earlier this year?
We halted it.
And then stopped there or something?
We stopped because we, we didn't have, we didn't have the, I'm trying to remember.
Didn't have enough water.
We didn't have the predicted rainfall.
So, so we, we stopped because the reservoirs weren't, weren't going over the spillway anymore, and it was, it was looking like the drought was going to continue, which...
Which it did.
So, the TTHM, the Total Trihalomethanes Testing, is, I don't want to say the deck's stacked against us, but we take one sample, especially at this time with the lower water usage, and the violation was at the Walker Road sampling site, which is out by the train trestle. We're all familiar with that, where that is.
Isn't that where it happened last time, it's kind of like a dead space or something?
It's not a whole lot, there's not a lot of users out there, so there's not, the water sits, this water stagnates, the water, I don't know. It's also, it's also a test at one point in time, and a minute later, the test results could be different, depending upon usage. But we take a sample, and four or five weeks later, we get, we get the result. So we took a sample on January 14th. You'll see in the citation, January 14th, 2015, that was 109.88. And I talked to the operators, and they were very surprised by this number. The, you know, it's, it's, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily expected, but it's also a product of our reservoir. When we, when we were treating water out of Morris, that's, I don't, I don't know the specifics, I don't want to get into the, the chemistry or the science behind it, because I'm not an operator, but I know that we, we did a study, it was communicated to me that at our clear well at the plant, we had a concentration of 50 milligrams per liter. So, that's a million and a half gallon tank, and so before it leaves the plant, we're at 50, we need to, and as it goes out into the system, that, that increases. And the further away from the plant we get, the more degraded the water quality is, and our, our solution is to flush as soon as we can this year.
All right, let me ask you, what is TTHM, what is that?
Total Trihalomethanes? I'm not going to get into, I don't, I don't know.
It's a bad chemical, it, that, and, and as I recall, this is a, like you said, it has to do with the low water level in the reservoir, plus the heat, that it does something to the chemicals in the reservoir?
I, I know it's a disinfection byproduct.
Right.
And I know that when we filled out the required forms, we filled out one for the reservoir, one for the treatment facility, and one for the distribution system, because it's present. It's, it's, it's a, it's not something that, that's created at one point in our, in our system.
And I think the violations have pretty much always been in the distribution.
Right.
Not in the reservoir.
Right. So, and this is a wide, this is a widespread issue with the current, the current, current drought conditions. That's not, it's not to excuse it or say that it's okay, because...
But the water level's higher this year than it was in 2012, when we had the other violation, isn't it? Or is it?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I can't say that, you know, we're faced with a cumulative effect, as far as, as far as I understand it. And at one point, at any point in time, you can have disturbance in the line that stirs up the resid, whatever residual, I don't want to say contaminants, because that's not the right word, but whatever muck we have in our pipes, and our sample would be, would reflect that. So if we had, if we were sampling where there's regular water usage, that, it's, it's a really a, it's a, it's a grab sample, and we sometimes are, are victims of...
Right, the wrong timing.
Right. So we've talked about, should we take multiple samples at a, at a certain interval around, you know, around the January 15th, or around, whenever, whenever we go out to sample, it is, it is, I believe, about a $300 test, but it's something we're, we're going to have more discussions about in the near future, because having that high concentration and having it an annual or a calendar year average, that January 14th test is going to be with us until, basically until our March, March test of 2016.
What is the threshold number?
80.
I'm sorry?
80.
80.
Milligrams per liter.
Okay. So, how many places do you take these?
That's 80 micrograms per liter.
Yeah. The UGLs, right?
That's parts of a billion, yeah.
Okay.
How many places in the system do you take samples from? I don't know, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I mean, it's more than Walker, Walker Road?
Right.
Okay. And Walker Road is?
I would say at least five, you know, there's, there's...
Okay, so Walker Road is the only place where you've gotten these readings?
To, to my knowledge, yes. That's, this is the only violation you've got.
Okay.
It comes, it comes down, and it, and it goes all the way back, Walker Road up to Bicentennial.
And, and it does dead end, or it goes back to, to, you say back to the Centennial?
No, there's a tank up.
That stays there.
Yeah, Bicentennial, dead ends, so...
And, and basically, you would characterize it because the water is not flowing freely to flush, continually flush things and dilute them and stuff? Is that why it works like that?
Well, I think, I think that's just one, one part of it. I think it's, there are a lot of elements that go, go along with the, the treatment and distribution of our water, that there's a lot of elements, a lot of different variables that play into this testing.
No, I understand that, but I guess...
I think that's a big part of it.
But what it looks like is that the treatment is the treatment.
Right.
And you take samples all over the place, and just, this is where you get the, the high samples, the high readings, primarily because of the geometry of the line. Is that correct?
I, I, I wouldn't say, I'd, I'd say that's probably the furthest reach of our, as far as distance traveled in the pipe, so...
So I guess, I guess what I'm leading to is, would it make sense to dig up that line and make some kind of a loop to somewhere that would keep the water flowing, that might prevent this from happening in the future? I mean, it's an expense, obviously, but is that, would that be a possible fix?
That could be, that could be one possibility. Flushing, having our flushing program.
Flushing would do it.
Putting that back into, into...
So would the flushing do it in this line that does dead end?
Yeah, we flush out there. You know, you're going to...
Okay, you open up the thing and do it, okay. So let me ask you this, then. There is this equation of flushing, which is going to use X gallons of water down through the drain.
Right.
Versus not flushing it, and things like this possibly happening. Have you ever calculated some kind of a, let's call it a break-even point, where even though the water level is not as high as you want it to be in the reservoir, that is still, would be a good idea to waste that water to assure the quality?
Um, no, no, I haven't really looked at any type of specific calculation. We base our, our decision not to flush on the level of the reservoirs and the prediction, the weather prediction.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And, and knowing that you would, you would expel certain, so many thousands of gallons of water that's going forever?
Millions, millions of gallons.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, I don't know if there is such a calculation, but I'm wondering if that's something that might be worth looking at?
We could, we can, we can look at that. I think it has to be, it's a discretionary decision.
Sure, of course.
It's based on what's your judgment, and you, the, you endeavor to keep adequate water supply and, and treat the water to the, to the acceptable level. So I think that is a, that is an ongoing struggle for a lot of communities, and especially that are dependent only on surface water. I believe Brook Trails is in a similar situation. But I, on a positive note, you know, the, we're not going to deal with these same types of issues at the source when we, when we deal with groundwater, so. And I think that's the direction everybody's, that's the direction the regulators are hoping that a lot of communities go, so...
And, and when we get the other water system, the groundwater system online, it's very likely that this issue won't happen again? Yes?
Well, I would, I would like to think that we can, we will have that in the, in the future, when we have it for full-time production, we'll be able to, as long as we're not in an, in an extreme, whatever some extreme severe drought it might be, but we'll be able to use and have enough water available from our groundwater source to offset, to, to flush every year we choose to, so...
Okay, good. Anybody else?
I mean, you guys know this is bad, so I mean, we all know this is bad, and we wish that we had had the water to flush, but if we think we could also get around it, because odds are the drought will continue, if we can get around it by potentially doing more samples in that area, I understand that that's a bigger expense, but... samples in that area, I understand that that's a bigger expense, but I mean, if you weigh that expense against the, you know, community set feeling about our, the quality of our water system when we, you know, send them these things. And it's really, the average Joe on the street doesn't understand the calendar year average and, you know, that it's way out there, they get a letter that raises concerns, obviously, and we've been doing so good with the treatment and the improvements that we've been making. I certainly think it would be worth, you know, potentially a slightly higher expense if we could avoid this.
Yeah, I agree. If you look at how the numbers ramp up as we go later into the year, it's pretty evident that, you know, we're paying the price for not flushing. And we didn't flush because we didn't have enough water.
Yeah. And I support that judgment call, by the way. I mean, we didn't, you don't know in the winter what it's going to be like now, and I think that having that emergency source will give us a more of a comfort level. Yeah.
So, and it's my understanding, and I believe this will be with the next test, I can confirm this with the operators, that they've changed how their average is going to be calculated from this point forward, which is to only consider the current tests and the past two quarters and taking the sum of the past two quarters plus two times the current concentration, if that makes sense? So if you look at our April fifteenth test of sixty-six, it would be double that plus the January fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, plus the October fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, divided by four.
Why are you doubling, what's doubling?
That's coming from the state.
Oh.
That's their new, that's their new, so I guess the purpose of that is to give more weight to the current condition? We don't really know. We've gotten conflicting, conflicting guidance from the regulators on this test in particular. The operators have the understanding that it was supposed to be a test, a grab sample in time that was the current condition and now we're finding out there's the possibility to maybe run some water and get the system moving prior to the sample, so we're going to, if that makes sense. Like we're talking about, we're taking a test of some water that could have been in the pipe for a day, or, you know, we don't know, and there's the possibility that we would actually run some water through that pipe or out of that sample port for some unspecified amount of time to get.
A more realistic reading. Yeah, so bottom line, I'm looking at the directives, in other words, what the city is supposed to do.
Right.
And basically, it's just, well, did you want to characterize it? I could, but I'll probably screw it up.
We have to notify all of the residents that the violation occurred.
That's pretty much it. I mean, and which indicates there, as you said, and you said it kind of casually, and I want to make sure that it's well said, that there is never any danger to the public.
Correct.
And this was reaffirmed the last time, I remember, the people from the Water Board came and they said those very same words. And if there was any danger, it would have been shut down, like, right away.
People would have been notified immediately.
Right. So, and that, I guess, is the bottom line?
We have those safeguards in place. So, and we're supposed to provide reports to the board, basically with our, that's in the directives also, what caused the problem and what we plan to do to correct the problem, and we've already done that.
Okay.
So I want to reiterate that this notice is going out to all of our water customers in tomorrow's mail, so they should have it Friday, and in addition to that, we'll post it on our website, and it's not this notice, this is what we received, that there's a template in here for an notice that we'll send out. We'll post it on our website, we didn't make the newspaper deadlines this week, but we have to choose one or more of either newspaper posting in a public place, including the internet, and, or delivering to community organizations, one of those three in addition to notifying directly all of our water customers.
Okay. That it?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Rod.
One more thing, under city manager reports.
You still have it.
Thank you. So just continuing with city manager reports, yesterday morning, was it yesterday morning? The chamber meeting? Chamber Commerce coordinated and hosted a meeting here in city council chambers for, to discuss needs and concerns with the top, the city's top ten businesses, really the top ten employers, and so we had representatives from metal effects, school district, hospital, drip works.
Microfour.
Microfour.
Spare time.
Spare time.
The city.
And the city, and had some small group breakout sessions, but anyway, this was the first of what will likely become several or ongoing meetings, potentially once a month, with this group of folks, and I would say it was really well attended and a very good use of everyone's time to be chatting with each other. There were some concerns and issues that we all share as employers, and one of them is direct testing, you know, in terms of pre-employment as well as ongoing direct screening with employees and not having a service locally to handle that. Recruitment and retention, big one, we're in a community that has lower wages across the board.
Training.
Training, you know, attracting people with the right skill sets. Where to recruit from?
Promoting local businesses.
Some of the businesses that met yesterday, they don't do a lot of local promotion, so they do nationwide, whether it's catalogs or, you know, professional trade shows or what have you, but it was a very good meeting, and again, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for coordinating that and putting that on. Kimberly's Jewelry was there?
Absolutely. The employee was there.
One of the bigger employers. It was good, it was a good session.
I thought it was really excellent, and I hope they continue that because this is one way that we can work out some of the problems that we can work out as a community, and I just thought it was well attended and I thought it was very knowledgeable to people in the community.
We also had representatives from the Workforce Development Board, which was previously called the Workforce Investment Board, they're based in Ukiah, but they were there to really listen to the concerns of the employers, and there was some good dialogue with some solutions presented right there. Workforce Development Board can be instrumental in helping with those recruitment efforts. And let's see, and I will say, you know, from my perspective, yes, I was there as the employer, but also to listen to what the needs and concerns are of our local businesses with regard to their relationship with the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, department recommendations, city clerk? Come on, you've been city clerk for a couple of months already, you need to, or not? Thank you.
Why do I need to?
No, okay. Ma'am, finance, anything new? Okay, and I guess human resources would be somebody?
That's me for the time being.
And you have nothing to report, I assume?
Nothing to report.
And legal?
No report.
Well, Adrian already echoed the kudos for Sergeant McNelly, he kind of got a lot to do all at once, and I don't think everybody kind of noticed it, it started coming in slowly, and then it was like that wave that hit you, and I was real proud of the way they went out there and took charge and got the notifications out, and thank you, Linda, for your kind words, and so we don't always hear kind words, and as far as nine-one-one, I've been speaking with the nine-one-one rep from AT&amp;T. The system we have should have had a redundancy, they had told us when they installed it that the second backbone into the system was going to be installed. I think this is evident, in fact, the email I was trading back and forth with the guy today was, so I guess good idea to get that backbone in, because we knew that we had a fiber optic line coming in from the south, the idea is that there'd be one coming in from the west, and that's what fed our nine-one-one. It's good that we have analog lines still, I mean, not only our faxes, but we have at least a couple of the old style lines, even though we have VoIP. Adrian told me that as a city, we didn't lose our phones, per se, we had a little glitch, and then we had our phones, and the fire department had analog lines, so they were able to function. Sheriff's Department totally reliant on their VoIP system, that's why they had the issues. I think sometimes in the rush to get modern, we forget that some of that old style technology is still relevant and important, and that was a concern when we went to nine-one-one, there was internet-based, and so I'm hoping that the secondary backbone will be put in place where there won't be another event like this, at least as far as nine-one-one is concerned.
You know, another thing that came up in our neighborhood, I am one of those nerdy people that has retained a landline so that I could, for precisely this purpose, my next door neighbor has a landline, but she went over to U-verse, the AT&amp;T U-verse landline, and they were really pushing that and have been really pushing that, everyone to switch over to that bundling system. I know a number of people that did that, probably it lowered, maybe they lowered their price, but that bundling is through the internet, so her landline no longer worked.
Well, she doesn't have a landline, per se, what she has is DSL, and her U-verse line is a VoIP line, and there's been a big push all over the country to go to VoIP, but it is, when it works, it works fine, and you're able to offer multiple lines and the computer does all the switching for you, but.
But sometimes people don't know, consumers don't know that they're leaving landline, land.
And the other one is that we've had a lot of folks, including some of our own employees who no longer have landlines, they basically just have their cellphone, you know, it's quite the expense to have a landline and a cellphone. I have both, I have a fax machine at home, so that's, again, a little old school, but not everybody has that capability. And it is nice, when we lost the phones a couple of years ago, we did our analog lines, I think, we even lost some of those at the time, but we did have one line that worked, and so word got out, and word got out to the Ukiah area, I think, they probably suffered more than we did, from what I've heard. The Little Lake Fire Department did disperse out a cache of OES radios that John Tolman was able to program with our frequency and the fire department's frequency, and distributed those to the schools, to the hospital, and so our little happy town here had communication, and they had emergency services as far as medical lined up, they had fire position, we had our guys out and about. Again, with the lack of landlines and folks relying on their cellphones, hoping that if we got flagged down, and the volunteers came in from the fire department, and so they were able to step up in a couple of spots, and so I think the schools got the coverage, the hospitals, the, I'd say rest homes, but the.
Nursing homes.
Thank you, nursing homes got there, they got told, and I guess, I guess the one thing I want to echo is that we obviously need to continue working on our emergency plan because this is just another, and I think there should be a subsection under technological verbs out there that will probably continue, so.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Okay, we did community development, do we have anything else under community development? Public Works and Engineering, looks like we are looking to do something.
Doctor Resolution accepting the Humboldt and San Antonio Rehabilitation Project Phase Two.
Couldn't have said it better. Do we adopt?
I've made all the other motions, so I'm going to.
Okay, do you have anything to say about it before we?
I think it was a very successful project, and it's very, it's very nice to see a finished product like that done for such a reasonable price. Our original budget back in June of last year was nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, so that's a difference of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, all of which I believe will remain in the half cent sales tax fund, so more money for Main Street.
But it looks like the budget was revised to be six ninety, six hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-one, and it came down to a final cost of six thirty-five, seven thirty-one, is that correct? It looks like, including change orders, was six thirty-five, seven thirty-one, and nine cents, but it looks like you had the total estimated cost of the project pegged at six hundred and ninety thousand, one thirty-one.
Right, that was what the contract amount.
And that was still lower than the engineering estimate that you had made previously, you said?
Right, what we had budgeted. We budgeted the remainder of the total amount that was budgeted three years ago or four years ago for the total project. Revised that budget based on the competitive bidding we received.
So we came in, it looks like, I'm doing the math real hard, fifty-five thousand less, below budget? Thirty-five from ninety?
Well, the six ninety included twenty-five from the waterfront and fifteen for materials testing, and there's some sewer, there's a sewer amount in here that I can't recall.
Yeah, so it looks like we came in about fifty-five thousand dollars below our latest estimate, which is not bad, you know, I mean.
My numbers are wrong.
Yeah.
I read the wrong numbers, I apologize.
Well, no, the interesting thing for me is that it seems like we've had, what, two or three, maybe four projects within the last six months or a year? You know, waterline project, street paving project, things like that, and every one of them has come in under budget. I think that's pretty amazing because I seem to recall when it was just the opposite, that we always went over budget. So this is good work.
Thank you, and I give a ton of credit to Jeremy and to Andrea for, you know, Jeremy managed the project and did a lot of construction staking with the help of Andrea, and, you know, they worked together to get this project together and get it out to bid with.
Got a good crew.
Very low oversight, so.
Got a good crew, tell them, give them kudos, we'll have to buy them cookies or something.
I'll buy them a cup of coffee.
Larry, do you have something?
But everybody on Humboldt Street is not happy with it. How come?
I'm not sure exactly who that would be, I would answer the question if I did.
It has been mentioned to you several times to go talk to a person that is dissatisfied.
And I have not had a chance to have that conversation yet.
Okay, we need to have that.
I've spoken to some of the residents that are really happy with it, and I've spoken to some non-residents that are so thrilled with the fact that the alleys are paved. They said that it's the best the city has done in years. I've gotten that feedback from some folks, they're very happy about the alleys.
Okay.
Who has the hole?
The reason the hole was there, and I haven't had a chance to get back to you on this one, is because there was a car parked on hole and it would not move, and nobody knew whose car it was. So that's what I was informed of, and then once the paving, you know, once the paving's done, the paper's gone, we'll try to fix it.
That's why you keep big forklift trucks around, isn't it? Move them out of the way.
Can I respond, Larry?
Sure, absolutely.
I did do a walking tour.
I did do a walking tour, Larry, of Humboldt Street, I think it was earlier last week, with somebody that wanted to bring a number of things to my attention, and indicated that he was, he had heard complaints directly from residents. At that point, we'd only heard from one person. And I just want to say that if people have questions or concerns about, you know, if they're not happy with whatever's going on, they need to contact the city. That's the only way we're gonna know about them. And anyway, so, I did talk to Jeremy about it. He was out there every day. This particular person could have talked to him at any point. And I'm glad that they came to me. I'm glad that these things brought to my attention, but it was after the fact. And, you know, we're still looking into the situation, but people have got to come tell us at the time that they see something that they have a concern about.
I can say that Jeremy had several conversations with the unhappy gentleman, and there were, at a couple of points, the situation was resolved, only to have the same situation come back the next day, if that makes any sense. So...
I'm just saying that I've got reports from four people.
Okay. I know somebody got their fence splattered and it was repainted.
And I think it looks beautiful, but I mean, I'm just saying that I'm a captive audience.
And one gentleman got, he went from an eight by five and a half, eight foot by five and a half foot section of concrete that was surveyed to an 11 by eight section of concrete when the project was...
Andy, I would just appreciate you going out and talking to the gentleman.
Okay, so you know what he's talking about?
I guess.
And, you know, so there won't be any missed conversations?
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
You have motion on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have to do that.
Six thirty-five, not six seventy-five.
Okay, so, I guess we need a motion to...
I would so move...
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, comments from anybody? Ma'am, would you be the honor, please?
Yes. Councilmember's turn.
Yes.
Madam? Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Can I pass another, or is there other public works?
Update on the emergency water supply project. We had the final inspection by the Division of Drinking Water on September 4th, and everything went great. I mean, we did, just this afternoon, right before, right at 5:00, we got our punch list. I haven't had a chance to review it, but I skimmed through it really quickly and didn't see anything that was gonna take up a lot of our time. So, they were very happy with the project, and, once again, it's something, it's an asset for the city that...
So, so, once you go through the punch list, do they have to look at it again?
No, she just needs pictures of a couple items, a few items, to show that it's been completed, like a screen over a vent hall and, you know, little things like that.
So, at that point, we have an emergency water system online, ready to turn on whenever it's an emergency?
So, what the Division of Drinking Water is permitting is a source and a treatment facility for our water system. It's not an emergency system. It is, they're basically, it's permitted for full-time production by the Division of Drinking Water.
Really?
It's the SEQA side of the project that is not. So, under SEQA, we're only permitted to use it based on our notice of exemption for 25 days per year. So, we're gonna go through and figure out, my thought, we talked about it a little bit today, was for the last 12 weeks of the year to run it two days a week, if we can, if we can get it, if we're considering it a calendar year, you know, by December 31st, we're gonna use this system once we get it. It still has to get permitted. We still have to provide the, the, our treatment, our treated sample test, or test results, and show how much, how much chlorine we're using and how much ferric chloride, which we don't plan on using right now. But there's just some testing and some, we have to get the system working properly for them to okay it, which is only gonna take...
Okay, so yes...
Just a little bit of an iterative process. The manganese concentration coming out is, is below the limit, and it's, I think it's better than, than our surface water. And I don't, I won't have any specifics yet, but everybody, the operators are very pleased with the effectiveness of the treatment system.
So, so, what you have approval of is a system that is hooked up, and you can pump water out of the ground, run it through the treatment plant, and put it into the main line. But before you do that, you need to get the treatment process approved, so the final product is within specifications. Is that...
That's essentially what, what they're waiting for.
Okay, and that's just to turn it on and fiddle around a little bit, and you got it, pretty much?
That's pretty much it.
I mean, it's not rocket science at this point.
It's just about getting our chlorine residual to the right point, or when it's coming out of the filters. So, we ran it for, we ran it during startup and soaking our, our media. We ran, I almost say hundreds of thousands, we ran a lot of gallons through our filters without any, without any type of chemicals. So, we don't, you know, we just have to run it some more and backwash and go through the process until we get to a point where we stabilize and, and I'd say that, you know, that's a couple of days.
Good. So, have we gotten the check yet? That's a no, huh?
No.
Okay.
Did you hook up the, did PG&E hook it up?
No. No, that's, they're putting us off till the end of the month before they'll be out to...
But everything is set up to do it at the end of the month?
Yeah, we just, we got word today that they want to actually move the trans, they want to disconnect and remove the transformer before we do the work. So, that's a little bigger project than, than we had originally expected from them. So, that's, that's a frustrating, frustrating point right now, because it's been changing with them over the past two months, what they're, what they're expecting of us, and what they're, what they're, what they're gonna do on their end.
Okay, so we don't have electricity hooked up to it, is what you're saying?
We run the generator right now.
Are there any other little surprises that need to be known about?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But, yeah, the water coming out of the plant right now is, is, I would, I would, I would drink it.
Well, that's good.
So, I mean, it's, it's very good water.
And that's, that's a big deal, based on what it was, what, two, three years ago, when we were down to 100 days' worth of water?
Right.
So, I think those days are pretty much hopefully over.
You're a compliment. So, my thing's after the water.
I just think that all the people that worked on that should be commended, and I publicly want to say that I think that they have done an exemplary job, and I'm very proud of the crews that all got together and put this all together. I think that's a real positive sign for our crews.
I have asked them, I asked them to start putting together a presentation and a report that summarizes the project, and...
Nice.
I told them to get together a PowerPoint presentation for the next city council meeting, since I'm gonna be on vacation.
Oh.
They didn't like that idea.
Andy, I just wanted to tell you that they really did a good job and they should be congratulated on it.
I would actually consider asking them all to come to the city council meeting next month when the project is presented.
I could thank them.
So, that said, as I said, I will be on vacation from the 14th through the 29th.
Good for you.
And I'm kinda looking forward to being away for a little bit. In my absence, Scott Herman will be the acting Public Works Director. Adrian and I went over this, and I've spoken with Scott, and he understands what he needs to do. Should be a seamless transition for the short two weeks that I'm gone. Another quick personnel note, Sean Payne, I don't know if we went over this. Can we, we didn't talk about this.
You didn't.
He filled, huh?
It's okay.
Oops.
Who was our Public Works, he was in our Parks Department. He, he went out and got his grade-one water operator's...
Distribution.
And grade-two distribution, and he, he filled that position, the water operator one, with an in-house transfer. So, everybody's pleased with that. I could stay up here for a while.
Okay, so my, my quick thing is just that I, I am passing on a thank you for filling the pothole on Bechtel.
Oh, that one?
That big puppy that was, that was a...
The one heading west?
Yeah. And Adrian had mentioned to me a similar thing, that, you know, why don't people contact the city for these things? Because someone also contacted me about an issue over by the depot, and I think it's just because, you know, Larry's right, we're captive, we're, we're out there and people know to get ahold of us. So, the person that brought up the issue by the depot, I said, you know, you could always call City Hall, but sometimes the thank yous come to me and it's really, you know, it's not for me. We want to thank you for filling that pothole on Bechtel.
We do have a mechanism in place, when somebody does call with an issue or something, we have a citizen's report form, and it gets routed to the appropriate, you know, usually it's a Public Works type issue. And that's how we deal with those things internally, so we can track them and make sure that they do get done.
I think...
So, just so you know, we get thank yous too.
I think that was a PG&E...
Caused pothole?
Yeah, where they did some, some sort of, I think it was like a gas leak repair or something like that.
It looked like a sinkhole, actually.
It's very, well, it's very square.
Yeah, but it was...
Straight sided?
It wasn't broken.
But there was cold mix in there. Somebody, and we didn't, to my knowledge, we didn't put the first, first bit of temporary pavement in there, so we're still trying to figure that one out, but, go ahead.
Street sweeper. I want to give an update on, you know, you don't.
We've been trying to fix the street sweeper for, I don't know, three months now, I think it's been, two, two or three months. And we've been trying to fix it this week, and trying to finish the sign for the, for the Burke Trails, for the, for the airport, excuse me, to get it up for airport days. And we had, we've had, we always seemed to, we seemed to have something come up, like we had a leak in the Red Grove yesterday that we had to fix, and we had some other activities to...
Tried to give that sweeper to solid waste.
Tried, but we were supposed to have it fixed this week, and we're, we're gonna be sweeping within the next three to five business days. I mean, that, it, you know, the idea was to have it fixed on Tuesday and sweep on Wednesday, but it's gotten pushed back, so...
So, this weekend, we have a number of activities going on, and because our sweeper has been out of commission, I did an outreach to Tom Gunther at DeSova Gates. They have that nice sweeper, and so he has agreed to sweep for us towards the end of the week, Main Street, Bechtel Road, and East Hill Road.
Nice.
Goes up and down the street twice a day.
Well, it's gonna be working this time.
Speaking of, of East Hill Road, were they gonna repave that sometime before the end of the construction? Do we know anything about that?
We could report it out on the Caltrans. One of the report outs is the Caltrans ad hoc. We actually got an update yesterday. We, Rod and I and Jerry attended the transition meeting at the hospital, and Jeff Wright was there representing Caltrans, and so he gave an update on that, that he said September 20th through October 5th is what's currently scheduled.
Oh. Wow, it's right there.
Yeah, it's not very far away. And we've had conversations with Fish and Wildlife on the gravel under the Broadus Creek Bridge down here, and we're, we're trying to propose a, move, just moving the gravel in the creek, distributing it more evenly and getting it out from under the, under the creek. We're throwing around some ideas right now, but we have to put in an application for a stream bed alteration permit, and there is a meeting tomorrow with Fish and Wildlife, and we've scheduled a meeting at 12:30 with Fish and Wildlife before the 1:30 meeting.
This is on Friday.
Oh, my gosh.
It's Friday.
It's a blur.
Yeah, Friday, that's, that's what I meant. On Friday, we'll be meeting with Fish and Wildlife, so the discussion today was get, to get into more of a long-term, like a 10-year type agreement, type of agreement with Fish and Wildlife, so we wouldn't have to go back annually and try to convince them to let us do some, some remediation in the creek channel, so...
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Have a good vacation.
Thank you.
And water and wastewater systems, anything from that?
I think that was...
That was it. Okay, city council and committee reports, AMCOG?
Yes, we met on the 31st of August, which was a strange one for us. We normally meet the first Monday of the month, but for this particular time, we met on the 31st. The subject that we came across was, it was interesting, out of all of the different cities, the supervisor, which was Tom Woodhouse, actually ran the meeting, and I were the only two permanent in people there, and everybody else sent a representative to, to, to it. So, that was interesting, and it's definitely interesting to the people that came. The idea that we had was the MTA is going to run a second run from, actually, it starts over on the coast and runs through Willets, and it goes all the way to Santa Rosa, and they're gonna do two of them. And that was interesting, so that you could go and do some, whatever you need to do in Santa Rosa and then catch it on the way back.
Or like two, two a day, do you think?
What?
Two a day?
Two a day. And then the, the other interesting one was the letter that we sent to the governor and the transportation person in the, in the federal building in Washington, DC, saying that we need desperate help on the potholes and stuff that are tearing up our roads and stuff, and they need to come up with some type of permanent funding. And that was interesting. Nobody had any solutions to it, but it got a lot of talk about it. And probably the last thing that I got from it is that we have two projects that we have put out to MTA, to Caltrans, and one was the, the van lane, and that is a reimbursement. So, we as a city have to spend the money to get the money back, and I did not remember that at all, but I was told that that's the way that that fund works. The other one was the grant... Uh, the other one was the grant that we have for the Shuret, uh, for what is going to happen or what we want to happen in the community. And Caltrans, and I got it from Loretta and also from the representative from Caltrans, is still kind of in limbo and it will take them about two months to come up with, um, whatever thing that they need to come up with so that we can get funded for that. And probably the most, the nicest one for me was that on September fifteenth, or after September fifteenth, we will know more about whether we did well with the Rails to Trails. And I, that's a lot sooner than I had heard originally, so.
I, I had heard that we, um, would likely receive preliminary notification, um, sometime this month. And official notification will be in November, um, on the Rails to Trails, Rails with Trails application. On the Main Street planning grant, um, I've been in contact with Alison Purnell at, uh, Local Government Commission. So they're our partner on this grant application along with MCOC. And she's working on the contract and I'm working on putting the advisory committee together, which will be about twelve people, representative of the city, um, MCOC, LGC, Caltrans, uh, and, you know, the Chamber Commerce and Main Street merchants. And so, um, I should have that group put together, uh, or nailed down by the end of the week. And then we'll schedule a meeting, um, the kickoff meeting on that. So, we're actually, even though it seems like, you know, it's been on the back burner, we're on schedule with that. The main, the, um, downtown streets and alleys project, though, a little bit behind schedule on that. So we need to get back on track with that and get that project going. And I communicated that to Loretta, uh, last week, this week.
Yeah, I've, I've been asked by several people on, on, uh, the Main Street group to, you know, about it. So that's one reason that I ask them. And that's one of the reasons that we, uh, we talked about it. So thank you very much for the more information on it.
You bet. And then the, just a reminder and it'll come up again, the Revite Ed Committee is where we had, um, decided we would give a comprehensive update on all of those grants. And, you know, we're still honestly having some discussion, um, about whether we should just maintain a Main Street ad hoc committee or wrap it into Revite Ed. There's pros and cons to both scenarios.
Yeah.
But we do have a Revite Ed meeting scheduled for September twenty-second.
My anniversary.
Okay, thank you, Larry. LAFCO?
Needs Monday.
Okay, and MTA, I think that's MAGE. Nobody has reported that, I assume. MSWA did not meet. DDFC is MAGE. League, California Cities?
Has not met. There is, I'm sorry, there is, it hasn't met, but there has been some, uh, discussion about the league is supporting the governor's infrastructure, uh, roadways bill.
Water wastewater systems committee, not yet?
Didn't meet.
Revite Ed is meeting two weeks, one week? Finance committee, do we have something coming up in the finance committee, ma'am?
October twentieth.
October twentieth? Was that a notification?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Consider that notification.
I'll be here at three in the morning. Um, ad hoc committees, Caltrans bypass project, I think we had a meeting about that?
Yeah, so Adrian, would you want to report on that or don't you?
Sure, we met on, um, September first, uh, last week. And, uh, it basically served as an update for the, um, grant, uh, project and the timing of the relinquishment project, um, the East Hill Road paving project and, uh, what else was there, Ron?
The Sherwood Road, um, right, redesign. Those three things, sorry, the Sherwood Road, the high school sidewalks and the relinquishment are all being kind of bundled in the same timeline, correct?
What would that timeline be? Any idea?
Ron, Ron has a, we got an update. And Caltrans wasn't, I was originally thinking that Caltrans was gonna be at the meeting, but they ended up not being able to do it.
They had intended to be and...
Yeah, I, so it was kind of good because it was kind of our way of, we could all touch bases.
Who had the information? The dates and stuff?
Staff primarily.
Well, we had had communication with them, but they also had intended to be there and...
Right, the, uh, schedule right now is for construction on the relinquishment starts May first, two thousand seventeen.
And then...
And the water line will be in it before that?
Um, that, we're hoping to do that project next summer.
Thank you.
Have it out to bid.
Can we do that in-house?
No, it's too...
Too big?
Too large a project.
Okay.
And what, just to tag on, one of the things that I thought was very valuable is we got those updates, but we also decided to make sure that we're in clear communication with Caltrans because their draft, the draft documents for the relinquishment and things are coming out.
Next summer.
Next summer, so we need to make sure that the stuff that we want is in that draft. You know, because once that's, once that train is going, we need to make sure that we get the things that we want in there before it goes out to bid.
So you said that goes out next summer, that comes out next summer, so will, and, and they're gonna begin construction in May first of the following year of seventeen?
Right.
Which gives us the time to deal with what's on the list.
So are we gonna have a meeting with, to, how to relay our ideas that we think need to be done to Caltrans before they get it in this draft form?
Well, we're on track with the grant. And so the grant process where we communicate with the community about what they want and the city gets to weigh in on the things that we want, the grant will consolidate that into some sort of document that we can pass on to Caltrans.
And I'm sure...
And we're on track timewise.
I'm sure we'll be having agendized items on this thing from now on.
But they also said that they were going to, uh, do the sidewalks and, uh, overlay and whatever.
Yeah.
That will be in there also?
There are three separate projects, but they will happen concurrently.
And the three separate projects of Sherwood, the relinquishment as far as the sidewalks and the surface, and what is the third one?
The, the high school, the high school sidewalk is sort of being seen as a separate thing, even though it's kind of part of the...
Okay, all right.
I think it's funded, it's funded separately, different...
Yeah.
So, so the Sherwood Road intersection, that, that's a thing they're gonna do? I mean, that's not a question mark or anything, that's gonna happen?
They said it's gonna happen at the same time.
Huh, okay.
I believe utility relocation is supposed to start very soon on that project.
One of the things that came up, that we came up with in this committee is that we want to put all this in writing. You know, because not all of the parts of Caltrans are always in communication, they are not as small as we are. Uh, so we want to make sure, Larry, that we are, that we definitely know when the deadlines are, that we need to have information to them and things like that.
Yeah, written documents are always good.
And we also had a discussion, I've heard this, I had brought this up and I'd heard it in a couple other places about, um, some sort of community event on the, on the bypass before it opens. And I wasn't the only one who, who brought that up, but it sounds like maybe Ernie Burton might be scheduled, might be working to do like a, um, a...
Ernie Burton, Ernie Burton is in there?
Ernie Burton was, was, I think, well, yeah, because I've heard this from other people, but apparently Ernie separately had been thinking about doing like a, like a six K walk or something like that, which is basically there and...
And that's the kind of thing where you have to finish it because you can't get off in the middle of it.
But apparently Caltrans is open to doing some sort of, as part of the ribbon cutting, some sort of public access.
And there is a dedication of, of the viaduct for Jesse Pittman. So there will be some ceremonies going on there.
So there will be a chance, hopefully, for the public to see it before it's...
That's like walking on the Golden Gate Bridge on opening day. Yeah, why not? That sounds great. I'll drive it. Anything else, Rod? Thank you, sir. Willet Center for the Arts, anything on that?
Yes, um, we didn't have a, an ad hoc meeting, but I did want to report that they held a, um, informational forum, uh, also on September first that evening, uh, over there at the Arts Center to vet the idea of a co-op model, um, with, with their members. You know, I don't know exactly how widespread they put that out. But they had, uh, a very good showing, room was full of people that were interested in hearing more about this. So, we've had a core group of, of longtime Arts Center volunteers that have really kept things going on, you know, kept, kept the basic activities going at the Arts Center and have been exploring, doing the research on, um, different models and have, have settled on this co-op model. And they're working with the Arts Council in Mendocino County that is willing to serve as an umbrella nonprofit agency for them so that they can focus their energies on establishing this co-op, which would be, members, you know, would, would buy into it. And, um, and, and so they would be, there would be the initial one-time, um, membership into the co-op. And then, um, you know, whatever space they want to rent, they'll come up with some sort of fee structure for that. So, um, they're gonna be wanting to present this to the city council, you know, at some point when they're ready to do so. But I just wanted to give you an update that, uh, that's the direction that this is going in at this point.
I, I think that, I believe there's one of those over in Fort Bragg next to the Tattoo Place. I think that there's, yeah, that's an art, artist.
North Coast Co-op.
Yeah, North Coast Gallery or something like that where they, they're part of the co-op, but they, if you have your artwork there, you have to take a turn manning the door, that kind of stuff.
So one of the, um, one of the key people in this, um, that one has for many years. And then one of the other volunteers belongs to the co-op in Ukiah. And they actually have, um, quite a few differences in how they're structured. So it was good to do that comparison. So I'm not sure, um, where they're at, you know, if they have had a, but, um, it's exciting to see. And, and their plan is to keep the, um, the middle gallery, or the back gallery, I guess, because they have the front gallery, the, the neck, the middle gallery and then the classroom. The middle gallery open for the, um, regularly, you know, ongoing shows that, that take place. So that won't end, but they would use the front gallery for the co-op space.
So it sounds like they're really getting motivated and back into action again. That's good.
And they have, I mean, this is Anne McGlenty and Nancy Reed, um, Lynn, um, who's a test woman. We have, you know, four, five, six volunteers that have really been working diligently to research all of the different options and come up with what they feel is, is gonna be the most constructive.
So for the time being, you're still involved as you have been in the past. But hopefully you'll be able to wean yourself off of that once it gets different. Are, are they going for a non-profit status, do you think?
They would eventually, but, uh, at least for the next year, um, the Arts Council is willing to umbrella them. And, and that's a, that's a good approach.
Good. All right, good. Any other committee reports? Okay, council member reports and recommendations.
This is sort of a committee, but I had NCRRA today. One of the good things that is going on, it was up in Eureka, one of the good things that's going on up there is one of the old former mill sites in Fortuna is actually gonna be reused for manufacturing. And I tried to figure out what it was they were gonna be manufacturing, um, but I couldn't, I couldn't get that information. We just had a deal on, because there was a spur that was in there historically that was getting abandoned. But it's exciting that a huge, you know, former Palco Mills, it's one of the former Palco Mill sites, not the one in Scotia, but owned by the same company, a little bit farther up. It's gonna be manufacturing something.
So you're, you're on the NCRRA board?
Yeah.
When did that happen?
Remember they were asking if anyone wanted to be on the board and then the, the select committee? And apparently it wasn't like a, you would think it's hard to get people to serve on these.
Yeah.
Apparently it wasn't a slam dunk, I had to be advocated for, I guess there was someone else who was wanting to do it.
So you represent what this...
Cities. The city on the line, and the city representative.
For which cities?
There's a city seat on the board.
So this is done through the city, the county city select committee.
Okay.
And they meet at least once a year, more frequently as needed when there are vacancies. Um, and the boards that they appoint to would be NCRRA, LAFCO, I think, LAFCO. There's that one Jerry that has to do with, uh, public safety. And that's escaping me.
Franchise tax board, I think, maybe.
So this would be what, all cities in Mendocino County or the North Coast?
The NCRRA is a multi-county, is the North Coast.
Right.
And I believe they have supervisory representatives.
But not from every, not from every...
Not from everyone. And so this one apparently had to be a city council member on the track line. So I can only assume that I was competing against one from Ukiah.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
I guess, yeah.
I'm still sort of learning, it's a crazy animal.
That's interesting, well, that's cool, so, good.
It'll be good if we could get the tracks to Willis.
That's one step closer. Uh, any other council member reports? We don't have any ordinances. Good in welfare, I have something. I attended the first opening celebration for the hospital. And prior to that, I was notified that the Statue of Seabiscuit was being delivered. So I got up and I walked out to the hospital and I watched them with the thing in place and it was pretty cool. My first impression was, that's kind of big for Seabiscuit. But I, I mean, he looked like war admiral, he was a big thoroughbred. Didn't look like that knobby knee little guy down at the ranch, but I figured, okay, what do I know? But anyway, Seabiscuit is out there right now. So as I was standing there watching it being lowered down from the crane, there was a film crew out there. And, and there is a, a crew that is remaking, not remaking, making a new Seabiscuit movie. It's gonna be sort of like a documentary kind of a thing. It's going to incorporate some archival films, plus some new things and, and people are gonna, you know, today's people are gonna be interviewed, it's, it's gonna be an interesting thing. And, and I found out about this because I'm, I'm also on the, the, uh, the board of the Seabiscuit Heritage Foundation. And this group came to us a couple of months ago to see about the board being, um, a funding entity, uh, sponsor, fiscal sponsor. So the gal who was doing the filming, we knew each other. So we started talking about things in general. And the next thing I know, she asked me if I wanted to be interviewed for the movie. And, you know, put a camera in front of my face, I'm gonna say no. So we got to think, of course I was, I was, I was dressed in, you know, my jeans and the T-shirt. I was not Hollywood-ready, although maybe I was with today's standards, I don't know. So, so they, we had an interview and, and basically it was about, you know, what does the hospital mean to me, to the city and to things like that, which was a no-brainer, I mean, you know, it's so important to this community. So we'll see if it makes the cutting room floor or not. But I thought that was kind of interesting. But we took the tour, it was the, uh, it was supposed to be the service clubs, but I think there's a lot of other, there's a lot of people there tonight. And so that was my first tour of the hospital. You, you've been through it, haven't you, Larry?
No.
Not yet, okay, well, you're gonna be there Sunday, I assume?
Yes.
And Holly was there as well. I didn't notice.
I was planning to be there, but I, I couldn't make it. I did have a, um, less credit tour last week.
Okay, there you go. I, I gotta tell you, I, that is such an impressive place. I mean, the, the restaurant to start with, it's, it's amazing. And we're gonna be having lunch there, often. It's open to the public, it's beautiful. The whole place is beautiful, it's wide open, it's, it's, it's bright and shiny, the rooms are individual rooms and the patients are gonna have a view of the mountains, they'll see the roof, but that's okay, if you look up. It's nice, the operating rooms, I mean, everything is amazing. And, and, and it was so pleasing because this was so long in the making and there it is, by God. So that, that, that was pretty nice. And the flags are flying, they ran the flags up the flagpole. They had the American flag, the state of California, and the Adventist flag. And they'll be flying... And they'll be flying 24/7 with lights on them.
Do they have a light on it?
Yeah, yeah, they have big, bright lights on them. So I was standing there while Rick Bachman and some of the crew were throwing the American flag up there. And man, I'll tell you, it was perfect because there was wind. You always like to have wind when you put a flag up there. And that baby went up there, it was flapping around. It was, I just felt like saluting and crying. It was wonderful. So welcome aboard the hospital.
Well, yeah, I was able to make it there. Been a lot of driving today. And it really is something. And yeah, I believe today was service clubs. And I think they said they had about 100 people.
Yeah, it looked like quite a few, yeah, yeah.
You know, between Rotary and Seroptimists and all the different groups. And it was, I think, a good tryout for them for Sunday. Because, so Sunday is the public celebration and open house. So they got to sort of practice herding the cats through that, because we're also like. But it really, it exceeded my expectations as far as the decor. And also the art is just amazing. It's all local artists and it all fits so well in the space. I mean, it's really, it really came together well. The patient rooms are nicer than the rooms in my house.
Oh, yeah, they're beautiful.
I mean, they're really, really well done.
The operating rooms, the emergency rooms, everything is so nice. And they have these virtual skylights where you look up and the sky is always blue.
Cloudy, yeah. And if you do get a chance, if the public gets a chance to go on Sunday, you should get a chance to see the operating rooms because you never get to see, I mean, it's really a rarity to be able to see an operating room because, one, it's a perfectly sterile place. And so after all the open house is done, they're going to sterilize the whole hospital. You know, that's part of the process. But yeah, when you're, if you're in the operating room, then you're unconscious.
Hopefully.
So I mean, it was really neat. I mean, it's state of the art. It's.
Yeah. And the equipment wasn't even in there yet.
Yeah.
So it's a lot more, so it's going to be.
The ER, they said they could fit the existing ER in the lobby of the new ER.
Yeah.
You know, like it's, they just have so much more space. And of course, there was nurses on the tour. It was great.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they had.
And they're going to have two.
Yeah.
They're going to have two robots there. They're getting an extra robot, one for each floor, which I think is kind of cool. So all in all, it's a welcome addition to our community.
It's really good.
Yeah. So everybody go out and get sick after October 15th. By the way, I was thinking, wouldn't it be great, they're going to move, they're going to move the patients, make the final move, I believe, on October 12th, 15th, 15th? And I thought, and this is the role that you guys can play, that wouldn't it be great if we got everybody in town to line the sidewalks between the two hospitals and just cheer them on as they pass through?
You know what, though? Well, I mean, obviously the hospital would know better. I was thinking that everyone should stay home on moving day because, I mean, they have a, they're orchestrating.
Oh, yeah.
A well-oiled machine and moving these patients. And I was thinking, any like extra, I was thinking, that this weekend is the time for celebration. And then that the, we might want to keep it mellow on the same day.
Well, we shut down Main Street for Brad Walton coming home from his bike ride. We can shut down Main Street for the hospital, whatever. Okay. That was just a suggestion. And I'll probably go no further than this room. I have a feeling. Okay. We have a closed session?
We do. Can I just, a couple of upcoming events?
Oh, sure.
So of course, the hospital's dedication ribbon cutting this Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00 PM. I haven't read the most recent promotion in the newspaper, but they're going to have the entire parking lot closed off to any parking. So they're going to have actually four or six.
Six, I believe.
Locations on East Hill Road and Beckville Road and.
San Even Circle.
And they've lined up MTA buses to shuttle.
So there's no parking on the parking lot?
They're going to have tents set up for different, you know, events. When people get there, they need to check in if they want to, or the hospital needs to sign up for that. You know, certain time slot. The actual dedication is going to be at 1:30. So just keep those things in mind.
You can park in my driveway if you want.
I, good, yeah. Let's see, Saturday and Sunday is the Roots Annual Steam Up Event down at Rec Road. And of course, Friday is the Patriot Day Ceremony at Willet's High School at 12:15.
Airport Day.
Oops, write that on the list. Airport Day, Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00, or 10:00 to 4:00 PM, geez, I'm going to blow that one.
And on Saturday, Pearl Street is having a streetwide yard sale, apparently. Our neighbors have decided. Not the best timing, but.
And I've heard that on Sunday, we are not having any special visitors coming to town.
There is a wild rumor that was taking place. That was part of my call to Mr. Gunther at DeSylvia Gates.
Donald Trump was flying in, but we're going to miss out on that. Okay, so we, anything more? Okay, so we, do we have a, we do have closed session?
Just 14A, not B.
14A, which will be.